Okay, now your mic's on.
Okay, thanks.
Thanks, Ron.
All right, it's four oh two approximately, I think, on Monday, November tenth. This is the meeting of the Manzanita Planning Commission. I'm gonna call the meeting to order. And ask if there are any audience members who would like to make a comment before we get started today. Something other than the agenda topic for today, which is ninety-five. Any hands raised out there?
Karen, I do not have any hands raised.
Okay, then we'll move on to the approval of the August twenty-fifth minutes. Are there additions, corrections, misspellings? We need to revise.
I just will note that we received a note from Commissioner Berman. It was left off of the minute, so we added him back.
On the August twenty-fifth?
Yes.
Okay.
September eighth.
My copy here.
It was the September eighth, not the, not the August.
I'm confused, Brad. You were present at the August twenty-fifth, but not at the September eighth?
I was present on the September eighth that showed I was not.
Thank you. Unmute yourself, please.
Brad is unmuted here.
Can you repeat what you said?
I said I was present on September eighth.
Can you hear Brad?
Not here, Brad.
Yeah, we can't hear. It looks like your sound is off, is it?
Hang on, let me check something here. Sorry.
Want to make sure our minutes are correct.
Fred, can you hear us? Give us a thumbs up. Okay.
It should just work.
Oh, wait, hang on, I got it. Okay.
You touch the mic, Brad?
Yeah, is that better?
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah, we have you.
Can you sing for us?
You do not want me to sing for you. But I will, I will, uh, I was present on September eighth.
Yes, you were, but not on
not
the twenty-fifth. Okay, I want to just make sure we had it correct. Thank you. Any other additions, corrections? All right.
I move the adoption of the minutes.
Okay. All right, any further discussion? All in favor, I?
I am.
Is your hand? Okay, and then we've got the September eighth minutes as well, and this one, um, I have made a correction on my copy that shows that Brad was not absent. Um, and that Lee, Commissioner Hiltonbrand was absent but excused.
Yes.
Any other changes? Any, about a motion to appear?
Move.
Hey, is there a second?
I'll send it again.
That's a good second. Okay, any further discussion?
Are there grounds for excusal?
Um, just previous notice? Yeah. All in favor for approving as submitted?
All right.
Hi.
Thank you. Okay, on to the next thing, which is the real reason we're here today. Um, we are going to open a hearing, public hearing on revisions to ordinance ninety-five dash five, what's currently called the Manzanita subdivision ordinance. To be renamed Manzanita land division ordinance. Um, I'm Karen Reddick Yurka, chairing the planning commission, and I'm going to call to order this land use hearing, legislative land use hearing before the commission. Um, today's hearing concerns a legislative amendment to ninety-five dash five, the Manzanita land, uh, what will be the Manzanita land division ordinance. Including updates to land division standards, review procedures, and additions establishing expedited land divisions and middle housing land divisions consistent with House Bill twenty-one thirty-eight. As this is a legislative amendment, it lies broadly and does not concern the specific development application or property. Our role today is to receive the staff report and proposed ordinance language, take public testimony, ask clarifying questions, discuss and deliberate, and make a recommendation to city council. Um, first uh, thing we need to do is have the commissioners disclose any conflicts of interest, bias, or expertise contact, contacts related to this legislative amendment, other than the fact that I believe we all own property within the city and that we will all be affected by these changes if they're enacted. Any conflicts of interest, bias?
I own property in Manzanita. I don't plan to subdivide or partition it. I have not had any conversations outside of this commission regarding this proposal. And I have no bias one way or another. Um, personally, I'm interested in the subject, but other than that.
Okay, thank you. Want to meet?
I have no bias, no conflict, uh, no expertise contact. I do own property in Manzanita, but have no plans to divide it or alter the land in any way.
Good job.
I have no expertise contact with anyone regarding this issue. Uh, I have no con, wouldn't get interest other than, like most of us, own a house here. And, um, I have no idea in the future whether I'd consider dividing it, but if I do, I'll follow whatever ordinance we come up with.
Great.
Uh, no conflicts, no bias, no expertise contact, similar situation. I own a house and don't plan on doing any subdivisions, but very supportive of the middle housing approach.
Um, and for my part, I also own property here in the city. I have not had any conversations or expertise contacts outside of this commission or public meetings. Um, I have no conflicts of interest and no bias. There, yeah. Okay.
And I have had no expertise. No expertise communications, no no conflicts, no bias, and yes, I own property in Manzanita.
Thank you. Right, um. I suppose we should ask if anyone in the audience objects to any one of us hearing this.
Uh, Karen, I do not have any hands raised.
Do we have right, hands raised?
No, Karen, I do not have any hands raised.
Wow, thank you. I, I misunderstood you. Thank you. Okay, um, let the record reflect the disclosures that we've made here. And let's, um, go to staff to hear the report regarding the latest proposed text amendment to ordinance ninety-five dash five. And will that be you, Marcy, today, or Walt?
Well, Walt isn't here, so I can, um, I can run through this briefly. Um, what he did, I think the main difference between when we last spoke about this is that, uh, the articles eight and nine, which he offered alternatives to us to consider, uh, for each one, eight and nine are the blurred. A version that was consistent with House Senate Bill four oh six or House Bill uh, two thousand and one, the middle housing, the original middle housing bill. And he also prepared a version that had some small changes in it to comply with the future um, House Bill twenty-one thirty-eight, which goes into effect in January first, twenty and the city council at their work session on this topic, uh, asked that we go ahead and include and delete the House Bill two thousand and one version and incorporate as final the House Bill two twenty-one thirty-eight version. I'm not sure if I, um, need to go through. Would you like me to kind of summarize the rest of the staff report for you?
Yeah, if we could just go through it as presented, I, I made notes. You know, a few notes that, questions I had. Um, I don't know if anyone else has questions specifically or whether you're uh, happy with this.
I, I do have some comments on the proposal.
Okay.
Different sections.
Okay, so yeah, if you wouldn't mind wa- walking us through, um, the report.
I'll start with an overall all that overall, this, as you said, Cher, this will replace the subdivision ordinance. It's called the land division ordinance. And it includes, for the most part, all of the components that the previous subdivision ordinance had in it, except that it is reorganized. All of the same types of information are now organized together. For example, all procedures are in one chapter or, or article. Um, whereas they were scattered throughout the subdivision code before, so it's better organized. Um, but I'll just jump into what is in Article One. This is general information that includes the relationship of this ordinance to other ordinances, including the zoning code ninety-five four. And significant changes that Walt noted here include, um, that reorganization that I just mentioned. And that series partition is defined and now subject to subdivision regulation. And he also mentioned is that Article Expedited Land Division and, and article applies to middle housing. Land divisions also known as expedited little housing land divisions. Article two is about lots and parcels. Um, it includes land division provisions not currently found in ninety-five five. So to clarify, things like minimum requirements for property access, including flag lots, provisions for utility easements, and, uh, lot lines at right angles and lot averaging, prohibition on lot averaging. Um, so he mentions that lots must still meet the minimum lot area requirements of the underlying zone that is informed quite a bit by the changes that we are in the process of adopting for ninety-five four, for, um, minimum lot area requirements. And Article three incorporates street standards. Some of those come from the T S P. So, uh, it is updating those standards to comply with your uh, adopted, recently adopted T S P. I'm sorry, it may not be that recent, but, um, and it applies, uh, incorporates current provisions that apply to subdivisions such as alignment, street extensions, intersection angles, half streets, cul-de-sacs, grade and curvature, and marginal access streets. And it include, introduces new streets and allows the creation of a private access easement. And now I want, just want to read this part for beta because it's kind of important on the significant changes to, or Article Three, he says, while the current ordinance references street standards and alludes to private streets, it does not contain supporting standards or provisions. Updating specific street requirements consistent with the T S P, clarifying the use of private streets and allowing access easements are the major revisions. This article also includes provisions for shared driveways whereby two adjacent parcels may share driveway access that serves multiple, individual homes. Is my internet, um, stable? Can, can you hear me okay? It's
It's breaking, it's breaking up a little bit from time to time. Overall, I think we're getting the gist.
You, you're now frozen, Marcy.
Completely frozen now.
Five and six deal with the different kinds of, um, property division, property boundary adjustments, the simplest kind, dealt with in Article Four, and nothing in here is changing. Let me just double check. I think he's mostly just clustered all provisions regarding property boundary adjustments into this article.
I have a question on the revisions on this. Um, in the staff report, it says
I find that
um, we're accepting standards, um, the decision criteria include accepted standards for review, thereby no longer revise, relying on O R S Chapter ninety-two provisions. But there's still a reference to, uh, uh, looking at Article Four, Sub E, Sub Two, if required by O R S Article ninety-two, the applicant shall prepare and so on. And so I'm just wondering what would, what would an example of something that requires an Article ninety-two review? Is it something I should be worried about? I mean, I thought we were trying to get away from outside.
Karen, do you want us to comment as we go through this or listen to her and then come back?
Um, good question. I'll set this aside for later. We'll come back to it. Let's go, go through through the majority of the changes and then we'll come back to the, the things we need to flag. Thank you.
But to summarize that one question, Cher, it was that um, you still see a reference to O R S Chapter ninety-two within Article Four? And you're wondering about that?
Yep.
Um, in a small net, it's not O R S Article ninety-two, it's Chapter ninety-two. The Oregon revised statutes are arranged by chapter and section, not article.
Okay, we'll come back to the clarity. We're coming on that, and thank you for that update. That's important. Uh, okay, on to Article Five partitions.
Yes. Um, so this is a kind of next more complicated type of land vision. Partitions, um, so this talks about a Type Two application with specific notice requirements. And, uh, again, uh, all notice requirements are in Article Seven. They're no longer with the subdivision type like they were before. That's one of the cleanup reorganization items. Um, the language specifies decision criteria, improvement requirements and procedures, and plot recording requirements for petitions. And he explains that the revised document incorporates most of the current regulations and clarifies the decision criteria. The biggest change is that staff reviews all applica, all partition applications with the right uh, to appeal to the commission. There were minor changes to the submit requirements and the language specifies another agency. Nahelen Bay wastewater may be involved in the review of a partition. Are there any notes about that article?
I have one, but we'll come back, we'll come back to them.
Okay, so on Article Six subdivisions, the article outlines the entire process to submit and record an approved subdivision. Like a partition, this is a Type Two application with specific notice requirements. New language specifies the decision criteria, improvement and recording requi- requirements. In addition to meeting the lot and park design standards and street standards, there are additional subdivision layout requirements emphasizing neighborhood connectivity. Significant changes to this article are um, staff reviews the application, not the commission. And then editing primarily improved clarity here. The city establishes all bonding requirements before any construction may begin and final plots are recorded. Okay, so I'll, just since we're holding any comments on, shall I go on to Article Seven?
Yes, thank you.
Article Seven is all about administration. And as Walt explains, currently ordinance ninety-five five divides the review responsibilities between the planning commission and in limited cases, city staff. Article Seven changes those roles. And this is a, there are some major changes here, so let me go through them. This will take a minute. Significant changes. This is a completely new article focusing on the administration of the ordinance. The provisions follow the requirements in state law in which staff review, review and decide upon all land division applications. The staff decision is appealable to the commission and the applicant has the option of bypassing staff to have the commission review the case. There are two types of reviews, one and two. Type one application, so either meets or does not not meet the requirements and conditions limited to ensure compliance with the ordinance requirements. Only the applicant receives notice and is the right to make an appeal to the planning commission. Type two involves a notice to area property owners prior to the staff decision. Affected agencies, both internal and external, also receive an application notice. Both area owners and agencies have fourteen days on which to submit comments. Staff prepares a report after the fourteen day period ends and incorporates and responds to any submitted comments. The applicant in any area owner or agency that submitted comments receives a notice to the final decision. Those receiving the notice have a right to appeal the decision to the commission. As an option, an applicant may request the commission review the Type Two application instead of staff. Staff still create the land division under such size, effectively reviewing both the land division and the proposed variance. Finally, he says, uh, those sound like significant changes to me, but he says, the significant changes to this article is it completely revamps the review process for land divisions. However, the changes are necessary to follow provisions in state law. And with the changes, the city will finally comply. Finally, the language notes provisions in Article Seven do not apply to Article Eight and Nine. Okay, so now eight and nine, which are the, as I understand, the brand new sections. Expedited and middle housing land divisions. He's a general overview. The original ordinance ninety-five five amendment proposal combined expedited the land divisions and middle housing land divisions under a single article, Article Eight. During the July commission meeting, the commission supported splitting them in two. One addressing only expedited land divisions, that's Article Eight, and a second for middle housing land divisions, Article Nine. In addition, as noted during the Hill four fifty-eight regulations, Senate Bill four fifty-eight was the uh, expedited middle housing land division legislation that came with House Bill two thousand and one several years ago. It has now been superseded, as Walt says, by House Bill twenty-one thirty-eight, which goes into effect in January first, twenty twenty-seven. A commissioner suggested the city incorporate the Article Eight and the provisions found in House Bill twenty-one thirty-eight. So let me go, and we're coming to the end.
See?
Yes.
Sorry, Marcy, you're, you're breaking up pretty significantly here. Could you repeat that last comment?
That, um, the submitted Article Eight and Nine incorporate the provisions found in House Bill twenty-one thirty-eight. And that the last two sections I'm going to go through here are those new articles.
Thank you.
Shall I go on? Are we having internet problems that I may need to sign out, sign back in on?
You, I, the, the main thing I'm concerned is that there, if there are people in the audience who don't have this in front of them, they don't, they don't have the staff report necessarily in front of them, so
Yeah, I'm following this in large part because I'm reading
Mm-hmm.
many tools.
Yeah.
Perhaps you take your video offline and just go with audio, maybe that will improve the connectivity.
Sure. Um, is, was that a suggestion that I, I undo the video to preserve internet capacity?
Yes, sometimes that helps is if you, the bandwidth frees up for the audio.
Yeah, let's see if that helps.
A presentation, you come back to any exhibits or anything.
Right. I, I don't have a presentation. It's pretty much Walt's show, but, um, I will see if this, I hope this helps. So to
It didn't help.
No, we can't hear you at all, Marcy.
We're still
I'm wondering if I should call in on my phone. I mean, alternatively, Leila could, um, just go through the last two articles here. This is the, of the, of Walt's staff report.
Yeah, these articles, eight and nine expedited land division. And
On my phone.
Middle housing.
Eight is expedited land division.
Yeah.
And
And the main difference of Article Eight is that it could apply to both partitions and subdivisions. So that's been consolidated. And that the applicant receives a decision notice and retains appeal rights. In this case, the appeal is to the land use board of appeal. Um, so that's, that's Article Eight. Um, and then Article Nine, middle housing. So again, this only applies to, to middle housing types duplexes, triplexes, fourplexes, and cottage clusters. Uh, may apply to the division of existing structures, and it can be done concurrently um, with a building permit. Um, criteria specific to middle housing. Um, so, you know, obviously the, all the from a land use standpoint, um, we're looking at those things, but then it's got to comply with state building code. Um, the major differences here again is consolidations of Articles Five and Six, so including, um, partitions and subdivisions. And again, the applicant receives a notice of decision and retains appeal rights again to L U B A, and they have up to three years to file that final plat.
I think that's it.
Okay. Let's go back to Article one. And are there any questions, additions, corrections? I think we've been through all of this for the most
Because that's what they change.
Yeah.
The last couple of meetings, we, we've gone through all this and made some suggestions and changes. And this is a final look at before.
Yes.
There, there are some incorporations that Walt incorporated that are different and per suggestions. So I think it's important to make sure that it's consistent with the commission's recommendations.
Right.
I have a quick question to Marcy. It, it doesn't include the word townhouses in the four categories. Is that covered in duplex, triplex? So we don't need to have that word in there? Or does that need to be in there per the state? Either being very thoughtful or she's
Yeah, I think we've, I think we've lost Marcy. Yeah, I had a similar question that
It's consistent through the document. I just don't know if we need to have that in there so that we're complying with the state to
Was townhome, one of the entities covered by the state, the state law?
I believe it was.
Is, we'll make sure it's either in there or should be, if it's not.
Shows up in, in several places through the documents.
Yeah. And your concern is it's not where?
Uh, it's not in F. It says creation of duplex, triplex, quadplex or cottage developments. And it's just missing townhouses. And if it needs to be in there to comply with state law, we should get it in there. There are several other areas where it, it's a similar situation. Townhouses are just off, left out.
I see Marcy.
At least another place in there that I saw.
I'm back again and we'll try, I'll try. Just, I was amazed that I could be here at all today because they were going to shut our power off, but so I'm dismayed that the problem was my internet. But anyway. I hope that you can hear this. The townhouses are not there because they're not a, they're already divided. They can't be subdivided further through the middle housing land division. And just as a reminder, what a middle housing land division, an example of a middle housing land division would be a lot that has quadplexes on it. And that is divided into four separate lots. The, the parent lot is the original quadplex lot and the child lot per this expedited middle housing land division becomes the middle housing land divided lot. It cannot be further subdivided after that. That is part of the deed recording.
So, uh, individual townhouse cannot be subdivided, but three townhouses that had, are on, uh, share common walls.
It can't be approved. A townhouse cannot be approved until it's on its own lot. They're, they're attached units on their own lots to begin with.
Uh, so, so if someone wanted to do two or three townhouses, they would divide the lot and it would qualify as a duplex or triplex or something.
They wanted to develop like three townhouses on a lot, they would, they would go back through Article eight, I guess.
Yeah, they would need to subdivide the lot for ownership into three parcels for three townhomes.
Right.
If it was a five thousand square foot lot.
My, my
Be under Article nine.
Confusion about this is if someone wants to develop a lot as a duplex, but wants to retain ownership in the entire building on one lot. I guess it doesn't matter here because they're not subdividing a lot. Okay. Thank you. I just talked myself in and out of a question.
It's great. It's best way to learn.
Okay. So we'll make sure that townhomes.
Whatever we need to do to comply with the law, make sure that townhome ownership can happen at some point.
Right. Okay. Was your question? Any others on, any other questions on Article one? It's notably the, uh, changes that are either blacklined out or a new text, didn't they?
I have a question on the alley. It says a street which affords only secondary means of access to a property. And in my experience, and I think what's happening throughout the United States is that if there is an alley that often alley house above a garage or some other type of housing can have access off an alley. And, and in, in both Portland and Seattle, that's a significant number of the housing, middle housing that's getting developed. So I would make a suggestion for revision of that. And the suggestion I have is alley is a street located to the rear side of lots, providing vehicular, utility and pedestrian access to abutting properties for parking services, garages or units. And that would allow in the future, although we don't have any alleys now in the urban growth area, uh, if a developer wanted to do alley uh, kind of a development, then housing could come off of that alley. And I've done a whole bunch of projects where that's a primary access for small units. So this would preclude that. And so that would be it's kind of a doesn't seem like a very good use of pavement.
What would be the difference in between a alley and a private street?
I think it's a dimensional thing probably, but it could be not a whole lot different.
It'll serve the same purpose.
Yeah.
In, in your example.
Yeah. Yeah. It could be public. I don't know if if this is referring to the ownership as more to the dimensional and access aspects.
So you're suggesting an alley might not be built to the same standards as a
I, I, I
As a road.
I think the city would need to figure it out to be honest with you, but you know, oftentimes depending on configuration of the parcel, it may serve as fire access, but you know, maybe not.
I'm not sure I'm following all this. So a, a street is a public way. An alley is not necessarily public or?
Well, I think in all these, I believe they could be public or private. Isn't that correct?
I think so.
Yeah.
Your main value with, with your, your deal with this is that the language omits some opportunities.
Yeah, so it, it, it says a secondary means of access so that it kind of negates the alley development that's being done throughout the United States right now. With housing above a garage or, you know, in, in, I know in my neighborhood in Seattle, there's tons of people putting ADUs above the garage and it's only accessed off the alley.
So you're saying eliminate the reference to secondary? Because if, we should probably part the discussion about what an alley is and alley standard is and have that a little further down the line.
Right, get rid of the secondary and you can sort the rest out.
And that, okay.
Okay, that's great. So a street which affords beings of access to property, as that said. Simple.
Elegance.
Well, by taking the word secondary out, do we now require an alley to be the same standards of a
We're kicking that can.
We are kicking that.
What we're saying is what Bert, Bert's point was your, your secondary access, you now eliminated the opportunity to develop a type of housing that could be possible. So just by getting rid of that reference, you can arguably, if you have, to be defined later. Direction only, which I think we'll come back to that. Yes.
There is a definition of alley that is struck out. Why, why not leave it in place? Why do we take that out?
It says for access by service vehicles. But
Take out service vehicles. Might we just say a narrow street through a block? Which affords means of access to property.
Service vehicles is sort of the definition of what an alley is for. And in history, I should say.
Yeah, but it's not anymore. Yeah.
It is. It's just that we want to add things. We want to have more access.
I just, yeah, I'm hopeful this is a rabbit hole we can enter into.
You can, can kick and get you.
If you keep the existing definition and strike primarily for access for service vehicles. Alley means a narrow street through a block.
Which affords means of access to the property. You, you're changed.
Just eliminate by service vehicles.
Yeah, just eliminate service vehicles. By service vehicles, eliminate those three words. So then it opens it up. I'm good with that. Just eliminate the service vehicles so that it's flexible.
I support his suggestion.
Right. I'm good with it also.
I may have missed where it's service vehicle. Also, can you please tell me?
We're going to put back the text that was removed. Delete the new text that was added. And from the original text, just delete the reference by service vehicles.
You're talking about the definition of alley.
Right. That's a good, good solution.
Well, anything else on Article one that needs attention? Excuse me. Okay, on Article two. I don't think I have any notes on this section. Does anyone else? Just a little check. Now two sets of information. Yep. Okay. Article two is good. Three street standards. Missed a page? Okay. Street standards, any additions, changes, corrections? To the language that has been improved? We have none. Anybody else? There you go. Let's just keep moving forward. On the property boundary adjustments.
Let's see where you are. Well, actually, section three, I apologize, which is the private streets, private easements, shared driveways. And some comments on that section.
Let's go back where then.
It's really with section C about shared driveway access. And then the lots of parcels served by private streets or easements. And, uh, you know, this is a kind of evolution of a subdivision kind of language for large subdivisions with streets and stuff like that. And I don't think it really applies to middle housing. Uh, which is smaller, smaller components and isn't really, you know, the big project typically. Uh, and so, uh, you know, I have specific comments on the dimensional requirement for the shared driveway access. And then a specific comments about excluding the lot area from the FAR calculations uh, for middle housing. And I'll do some explanation, explanation for consideration by the commission. You know, commercial lots less than a hundred feet width in our city can only have a twelve and a half foot driveway. That's what the code currently reads. Uh, our new TSP only requires eight foot driveways and sixteen feet of drive width for minor collector streets. Those are streets with lots of cars on. Uh, so it seems to me that, uh, uh, rather than have an easement that's twenty feet wide and paving of eighteen feet since, uh, you know, we're only talking about a few, few units. Uh, that my suggestion would be, uh, get rid of a whole bunch of paving that's not really necessary. And have it aligned a little bit more with the twelve and a half foot curb cut. So my suggestion would be a minimum required width of ten feet of solid surface and a thirteen foot easement. And that would correspond to the three, I think we passed or we recommended a three foot setback for driveways in the earlier section. And, and I would limit that to, uh, just six lots. So that'd be two five thousand square foot lots with a shared driveway. So you're talking about four or six cars spread out over twenty four hours. And it's a lot different than a public street. And so, uh, it has significant impact to the ability to provide the, the housing. Uh, you know, a twenty foot wide by a hundred foot. This goes to the second section, a twenty foot wide by a hundred foot easement, as an example. On a hundred foot by fifty foot lot. That's two thousand square feet. And so then if you exclude that from the FAR requirements, then we're just zoning all those lots for duplexes. And so that doesn't make any sense to me.
I, uh, can you hear me? I think that that the intent, this is not, this does not apply to Article nine or expedited middle housing land division. Other, the dimensions, the tracts and alleys and shared driveways and driveway setbacks that you're talking about that are in ninety five four, those apply to middle housing. But this does not apply. It was my understanding that this, this applies to subdivisions, but not, uh, middle housing land division.
Well.
I'm looking for the language that, that says that. I thought I had seen it earlier in an earlier version, but I don't see it right now. I'm looking for the language that, that says that. I thought I had seen it earlier in an earlier version, but I don't see it right now.
He's there. I, I, I think if, if it's. This is, well.
It's street standards.
Yeah. It's talking about shared driveways here. And he, he broke it out, I think because we had some comments during the middle housing discussion about. You know. Twenty foot wide driveways and stuff like that. So. I guess the two points, I just want to make sure that. Is allowed. For middle housing is ten foot driveways. And that the FAR is not. Our easements are not excluded from the FAR.
But I do believe that the city council.
Yeah, they, they.
City council asked for a twelve feet.
Excuse me, what was that?
Sorry, so I was just. Saying what Marcy said, which is city council. Changed the recommendation for a ten foot driveway to back to twelve.
To twelve feet, wow, that's better than eighteen.
Better than eighteen.
Better. Results.
Are we speaking with the twenty foot easement?
Yeah, that doesn't make sense to me.
Standard.
No, it's not standard, you know, I think, well, once again, for. It effectively. Well, for middle housing on a five thousand square foot lot, if it was a twenty foot easement. It did go all the way to the back for some reason, they probably wouldn't do that. You could only have two units.
Sorry.
Then it wouldn't comply with the state law.
Somebody educate me, why do we care to have a minimum size? Width of a driveway is, but it, why isn't? The two people that are going to share it, why don't they decide how wide they want it to be?
It's good to be.
The, the point of having a minimum width.
I think it's an evolution of wanting a, a twenty foot fire lane to serve. Middle housing.
Units in the back of the lot.
In the back of a lot, yeah, and you don't need that in, unless your lot is really, really big.
Can I just clarify what it is that's on the table, since we're, we're pretty far down the track, and so it's. I want, I guess I'm not clear what we're doing.
You're proposing ten foot paved width and. I have fourteen foot easement, but that doesn't make sense to me. Sixteen foot even easement makes sense with ten foot paved, but.
Well, you know. We, we allowed for a three foot setback for middle housing. To the drive.
Drive your side, and council did uphold that.
Okay. Did they agree to that?
If this. Chapter did not apply to middle housing, I think it would solve us.
Right.
So I shouldn't worry about, is what you say.
What is it saying?
So.
We need a provision. I thought it was there that says that this does not apply to middle housing land division.
None of the street standards apply to middle housing.
Correct, because we're talking about starting with a parent lot that has already been created. It already has its, it's already surrounded by streets.
But Marcy, if you, let's say you have. Two units or three units of middle housing, you're gonna have a driveway, you're gonna have. An easement very likely. For access to the back of the parcel. And so.
The provisions of ninety.
None of the.
Five, four would apply.
Yeah, I didn't hear your response, you said, none of these standards apply to that condition.
I'm trying to say that differently. The provision ninety five, four would apply.
Could you repeat that, Marcy?
Ninety five, four would apply. I'm sorry, I'm gonna log out, log back in, and I'm apparently having a lot of problem here, I'm sorry.
Well, it's. I guess, you know, if you're, if you're dividing a five thousand square foot lot. And it's for middle housing, then there, none of this stuff applies. Got it.
Yeah.
And it's, you do whatever you want to do.
Then reason. I mean, you have to meet all the standards that are set for it in ninety five.
In the zoning ordinance. So you have to show you're meeting all those. Requirements.
Right.
Middle housing, so you have to know all that.
Okay, and then in that section of the ordinance is. Are easements excluded from the FAR calculations?
No. No, they're not. The driveway is not included in the FAR calculation. Or it is.
I think it is.
Yeah. So easements, no, easements are excluded.
I, I think we need to make sure of that for the middle housing, otherwise we're not going to get any.
Okay. Yeah, I know, I can't think of a condition in which. Easements would be excluded from. Purity ratio calculation, I'm thinking of some of the big projects we've looked at as a commission, we've. Never excluded easements from that, even for the bigger subdivisions.
I said Todd is your parents against France, so she's just the whole area, the whole area, and then boom.
Yeah, yeah, and that had a road through it.
I, certain percentage needed to be public open space and stuff like.
Yeah, I hear your concern, but I think, think for.
Yeah. I, if that's for sure, then yeah, I'll shut up. I just want to make sure that we're, we're being consistent with. You know, the intent. And not punishing. The laws.
Sure. So if none of these. Article three applies to middle housing.
When we.
Should probably say somewhere.
Some more.
Unit piece.
Yeah, I think that's what Marcy was saying, it's referenced.
Marcy said it did say that somewhere.
Good, yeah, I'm not seeing it where.
I, I thought that it had said that, I checked it in an. Earlier draft. But I don't see it here.
Marcy, does it? What are you saying? Do we, we don't need to worry about this?
We need to make it clear that these do not apply to middle housing. That the provisions in ninety five, four are what apply to middle housing.
We can make that reference, so if you elect to adopt today or recommend adoption, just note that and.
But that'd just be under the general provisions.
Yeah, that's very.
And.
The very top.
Don't you think, Marcy, I think that's where we can nab it.
Yes.
Okay, all right, well.
Good.
We mark.
Thank you.
Article four.
Article four.
It allows existing lots of parcels and does not create a new lot.
Four applies to everything except real housing, right?
Yeah, that's why they have their own separate. For also does not apply to middle housing.
Correct, correct.
Then we might want that statement.
Again, same statement, put it at the top.
That's true, Article five.
Right.
I do have a. Comment on Article six. Make it, make it.
Please. I think it's related to. The table under. Section six point zero two zero C.
That.
Or three, that arterial. Should read eight hundred feet.
Right, we, we went through quite a. Discussion to try to.
Yeah.
Things kind of. Little bit more walkable. And so, yeah, that would be the, it would be a change instead of maximum length. To max, maximum block. And then an asterisk with down below stating that the maximum block. Side would be two hundred fifty feet. And so those are the kind of the three changes, maximum block face, just change that with a little asterisk. And then below residential, there'd be where the asterisk shows up, says. Max, maximum block side, two hundred fifty feet. So then you're essentially. Except for. One oh one. You have five hundred by two fifty blocks, which is still larger than the blocks here in. The city's, city center. And then I would also. It was struck in this that a grid pattern shall be established for new development. And I don't know if we discussed that. Well, I would not. I would keep that provision in.
Which provision?
It's back up in, above the chart.
Yeah, um.
Close block.
Some, yeah. The grid pattern shall be established for new development, you want to leave that in.
I want to leave that in. It doesn't mean it needs to be square, it can be curvy and everything, but we, just to keep the connectivity that the. Transportation plan is looking for, rather than a big freeway materials. And. So I'd keep that in. And then just make those couple of modifications to the table. And then that would be more consistent with a walkable. Bandwidth.
We discussed the eight hundred feet for the. Length of an arterial.
Yes.
Acts. But your asterisk, I don't remember.
I don't remember either.
Are you proposing this, sir?
I'm proposing, well, five hundred foot by five hundred foot block. Is bigger than New York City's block, and just a little smaller than. Salt Lake City's, which is, those would be, you know, we would have probably the second or third largest block. Size in the nation, I don't think we want that.
So the top. It can link of the. Block, but the side of the block, and that really is applicable to all three of these, isn't it?
Yes, that's.
Two fifty, okay, I'm, I'm on board with that.
Yeah. And if, if somebody wants to do something different, they can come back to the commission and, and ask for a justice. But this directs more walkable bands of data. And a slower speed band, so they're more relative to the twenty miles an hour that we've been. Working towards.
I support that.
I can live with that as well. Anybody else?
I think that's good.
Comments, Brad?
Should have been in the beginning of the course, I think we did some. Yeah, it's not too easy. My notes for block. Back there, you know.
Okay.
I'll send it to Marcy.
Okay, I have a question while we're in this same. Where are we? Five? Six.
Six.
Um, under item. Six. Connectivity to achieve the objective in item four above, and item four above refers to. Highway spacing and access on highway one oh one. And do we only want to have stub and streets and accessways? Adjacent to highway one oh one, or do we want them throughout? The city. Um, what's the question? So if you, item six, below, right where we were talking about. Block length. It talks about connectivity and to achieve the objective in item four above, the city shall require stub end. Streets and accessways, but item four only refers to. Access on highway one oh one. And I just wanted to make sure that. What we were talking about. With, there are a couple of. Illustrations. On the next page of the connectivity.
Okay.
I think that we want that to apply throughout the city, so that cul-de-sacs. Have pedestrian passageways. And that stub and streets are available. Next to other developable properties. So I would just suggest that we strike to achieve the objective in item four. I would just say. The city shall require the following. And leave, you know, the first half of that sentence completely out.
That makes sense.
Yeah.
To avoid the risk that you limit it to just.
Yeah, there's so much overlap between this and the street standards, we have to come back and actually really. It's. Good that we didn't end up adopting the. TSP amendments, because some of them are affected by this, so. Just know, just come back.
Okay.
That's a good point. The issues at the moment, but there is some cross connections to some other ordinances that I'm getting activated, so. It's complicated.
This would be, Karen's concerns would be addressed at a later time.
Yes.
Can't kick.
Well, they're just gonna be doing ordinance amendments for like the next five, six years. Good for you now.
Does anybody else have anything on? Article six.
Yeah, I do.
Okay, you got.
Looking back at the old ordinance. There is a section forty seven that talks about weapons. And gives the planning commission the authority. To. I guess prohibit subdivision or partition. Property. If in its opinion it would. Jeopardize. The floodplain or wetlands of any stream, creek, estuary, or drainage course. Which seems substantial authority for this commission, but I don't. Know that, I don't, I don't see that requirement. In the new ordinance, any. Or, or that authority. In the commission, and I'm wondering if that's something we want to retain or. Get rid of.
And this is in ninety five, five?
Yes, ninety five, five, section forty seven. Certain ordinance for subdivision and land partition. A, a, full planning commission may, when it deems necessary for the health, safety, or welfare of the present and future population of the area. And necessary to conservation of water quality, drainage, and sanitary facilities. Prohibit the subdivision or partition of any portion of the property which lies within the floodplain. Or wetlands of any stream, creek, estuary, or drainage course. Is there, will be preserve from any and all destruction or damage resulting from clearing, grading. Or dumping of earth, waste materials, or stamps, except as may be permitted by state or federal agencies. With appropriate mitigation.
It could be wrong, but I think some of that's taken up in ninety five, four.
They don't.
The development of lots.
I don't recall. I don't recall.
Okay. I could be wrong. I'll look it up.
Well, it shouldn't be in the subdivision section as well.
Sounds good to me, Tom, but, you know.
Yeah, it's not in there now.
Is it, is it tied to objective standards or something?
So I'm wondering if it was taken out for that reason. There's only one small portion of estuary land in the city. And that's in the urban growth boundary. Just so we know, we don't have any floodplain in the city limits.
There was.
Or weapons.
Um.
It's a velocity zone, which is along the ocean shore. We actually aren't, we don't have any floodplain.
Crease in the urban growth boundary either.
No, in the estuary, there's like this little sliver on the east side. Uh, regardless, so is the question then, do you want to add this back? Does it exist elsewhere? I think it's regulated elsewhere in housing and the zoning ordinance. Uh, Walt isn't here to explain why it was taken out.
Is it in the commission's authority or something, section or something?
It is now. I mean, that's my point. We're, we're, yeah.
Yeah.
The new ordinance is supposed to continue all the requirements of the old one, and this seems to be a pretty big one, and it's disappeared in the transition. So, um, I if it's, um, if we're going to admit it, it should be a conscious decision one way or the other. And I'm happy to admit it if it's covered elsewhere, but I suppose, I don't have it in front of me, but if someone has changes to ninety five, four, and you can search for wetlands, maybe we can find.
How about it now, and I, there isn't anything directly related to the language that we just shared in the old.
In ninety five.
In ninety five, four.
Talks about no person shall do any site preparation work in the wetland notification overlay zone. City's obligation to inform the applicant of the jurisdiction. It also belongs to the Division of State Plans and U S Army Corps of Engineers. But again, it doesn't, it doesn't specifically state what you shared, Tom.
Where I say, do you know why it was taken out? I'm just, and there's really nothing. I mean, there's no, there's no wetlands, so there's no.
I, my understanding is that nothing was taken out of Articles one through seven. They were reorganized. If anything was added, it was T S P.
Who, you mean by articles? If the old ordinance has sections.
No, I'm in the ninety five, five in front of you, Articles one through seven are supposed to be just a reorganization of the old ninety five, five.
Okay. And I guess saying is, I'm, I'm not comfortable sitting here having that provision, which seems to me to be significant, just drop out because it's been overlooked.
Yes, I agree.
So if we, I'm, I'm happy to have a debate over it. Maybe this isn't the meeting for that, whether it should continue or not, but.
When she walked.
Here, just, what was I? One through seven reorganized.
Can you, you're, you're going in and out, or your microphone isn't in front of you? Can you say that again?
Well, what did you say? You said sections one through seven.
I said Articles one through seven in ninety five, five, the version that's being adopted. It's my understanding, nothing was taken out. It was just reorganized. So if there's wetland language missing, uh, it's a mistake.
Well, I know that we haven't discussed it before about
We certainly.
Removing that language.
We haven't discussed, take, do you have the old ninety five, five there?
Yeah, that's what I read to you.
That's what you read, okay.
Okay.
Was it under, was it, was it within Articles one through seven, or was it somewhere else?
Well, this is what I'm telling you. Ninety five, five doesn't have art. It has sections. There are no articles. It, section forty seven is the one addressing wetlands and subdivisions, so I, I, I'm lost talking about, we just took the old articles and put them into the new. There aren't old articles.
There will be. There are.
Fifty six section have a lot of provisions, many of which are in the new ordinance, now arranged as articles. I did all that. Section forty seven has dropped out and makes me wonder what else is dropped.
That's can worry you.
And, and I, some of the others don't spring to mind, but that one seems a big deal.
I would be happy returning the language exactly as you read it and into.
And I'm not sure where to put it because it, it applies to both partitions and subdivisions, so since we now have those in Articles six and seven, it would need to go in each.
Or maybe, maybe it's its own section or article.
Or
scope of regulations.
Yeah, I'm not, I mean, where it should go.
You have one oh five oh scope of regulations. In the.
That would, that would work.
The name.
Here is me that we have a that, since we missed that, that we may have missed something else. We don't know exactly how to go about verifying that without more time than we have right now.
Yeah.
I noticed this discrepancy by happenstance. Something caused me to search for wetlands in both things and um, but I haven't, I didn't go and compare everything else in the old and the new. Part because much of this confuses.
I did not go back and compare to the news to verify that it's all been brought forward somewhere.
Hmm, well, it's my, Walt did most of the work, right, Marcy?
What was the question?
Did Walt do access to this? He's really the guy we need to talk to.
Yeah. Yes, that's true.
Well, may I suggest that we, if, if we concur that it's important enough to be included, that we tentatively have it to go into Article one because it will apply to every subdivision or land division. Um.
Hey, Karen? Really quick, this is Scott. I've got Walt logging in here in a second to hopefully give us some clarification on this. So just give him a minute and he, he's going to log, turn his computer back on and he'll log in.
While we're waiting for Walt, do you mind if we go back to Article five? We've kind of jumped right over that. And I had a question. Um, one of the things that, under submittal requirements, five oh one oh, sub C, um, it just says a partition plat to be drawn to a scale acceptable to the City Development Services Department. And I wonder if, is that an objective standard? It's, it just kind of jumped out at me that, um, could, could that vary from one applicant to another?
It's in here a couple of times. It's curious about the same thing, yeah.
Um, the difference nowadays is everything's electronic. And so before we'd specify a size, you know, and so since everything's electronic now, I, I don't have as much concern as I would have before, where you were actually asking people like, print this out, we need this eleven by seventeen. Nowadays, everything just kind of, everything gets submitted online, so I don't know how how you could do it. I, I hear the concern about it being objective, um, you know, that's, that's legible, you know, like, so there's something there, there, a little bit more than just what's acceptable, because someone can be mean and say, that's not acceptable, you know? I don't like you. We would never do that, of course, but alleged, legible would be my thinking. Okay, that's a concern.
Okay, well, it's just, uh, I'm happy with the language if a- as long as it doesn't get applied differently to different applicants.
Yeah.
And that's kind of a handshake trusty deal. Which we, which we do. Okay, um, yeah, and I think you're right, there was another place in here, that same, I can check that. Okay, do we have Walt yet?
He should be logging in now. He had to turn his computer back on.
And, uh, is there any?
There is.
Yes. Okay, I'm here.
Thanks for jumping back into your work life.
Oh, that's okay, no problem. I usually charge triple for this, but that's okay. You guys are special.
Those are triple charges, I think. Um, but we are, we ran into an issue, excuse me, um, in which we had, uh, the previous version of ninety five, five that when is adopted and.
That's not right. Yeah, so.
Yes.
Hang on, checking open mics.
I'm getting some feedback here.
It's this. Get out of here.
Yep.
Hang on. All right, I have microphone locked.
Hopefully this is better. Um, we ran into an issue where the, uh, one of the sections in the previous version of ninety five, five is not included in the revisions that you've submitted. And that's related to development in wetlands, um, and other wetlands, estuaries.
Areas subject to inundation, streams, creeks.
Yeah, thanks.
Drainage course.
Okay, well, part of under on the general heading of subdivisions, there is provisions that they need to submit that information as part of the application procedures. In the other part, if you look under, and I'm going to the expedite land division right now, um, don't have my paperwork in front of me, so, uh, if I recall on that one, it talked about beaches and dunes and gold five resources. Um, I believe that is correct. So in other words, um, if they have wetlands, they have anything on the property. Um, I do not recall the specific language, but essentially that's not included as part of their partition. Um, I think that's kind of the way, way it works. I wish I had a couple of minutes to kind of go through this. I'm sorry. Marcy, am I pretty much in the ballpark in that?
So you're saying that the application requirements in, um, they include language requiring the applicant to submit uh, information about wetlands that it's on there, that are on the property.
Exactly. All that information, uh, topographical information, et cetera, is all part of the application. And as part of looking under conditions, uh, that may be imposed, um, obviously you can work in any condition that takes into account, say setbacks. Well, in fact, staff has a lot of latitude on these, uh, look at setbacks, pres- preservation of wetlands. Um, a whole bunch of stuff that can, uh, accommodate a, a decision can accommodate.
I don't see any of that. I don't see the word wetlands mentioned anywhere.
It said goal five. Goal five includes wetlands and other.
Okay, my other point.
Natural resource areas.
My other point, whatever's in the application, the current ordinance gives the commission the authority to deny any partition or subdivision if you think it will threaten a wetland, a creek, drainage course, an estuary. Is what, what in the current, can you point to me something in the, in the proposed ordinance that would give that same authority to the commission?
Um, actually.
Commission.
See, um, I would hesitate to say that that authority is currently still available. And let me explain that the issue is really, if they meet all the requirements for the minimum lot sizes, et cetera, et cetera, frontage access facilities, we can place conditions that note that, no, you cannot build in a certain area to uh, due to the wetlands. And bear in mind, just because wetlands are there does not mean that you cannot construct. It just simply says that you have to mitigate in some manner. Uh, in other words, maybe approach it as a planned development to move development over to one side of the property, or you would go ahead and look at it in terms of. or you would go ahead and look at it in terms of certain pieces of property would just simply not be uh, partitioned, but that would all be looked at when you get a complete application. Again, I hesitant, I hesitate to say that you really cannot deny because there's a wetland on the property, but you can condition if there's a wetland on the property and note that, you know, mitigation must occur or no development can occur. And in fact, you have to meet the requirements for DSL. And that's, and that's pretty straightforward stuff.
Okay, I've been looking at partitions, Article Five, the new provision, what, can you point to me where in there it says you can, you can the same as what we have now, which is you can prohibit the subdivision or partition? If it affects a wetland?
You cannot deny the partition, just like you cannot deny a project based on simply there's a wetland there.
But I think we're, we're talking two different things. I'm not talking about the legality of it. I'm telling you that the current ordinance says we can do that, and the proposed ordinance says, doesn't say we can do that.
Because I think what Walt's saying is that you, you can't anymore. The cleared objective standards that are now required by the state for housing don't allow you to make those kinds of subjective decisions that you had previously, which is why it was taken out.
Thank you, Lila. Yeah. And that's, and that's kind of the driving force behind behind it. When you look at a partition, subdivision, whatever land division, your first question is, does it meet the standards for that particular partition? Then as part of the review process, are there any other issues on the property that need to be addressed? And this can include wetlands, it can include, maybe the sewer line needs to be redirected in some other um, uh, location to provide for future, uh, development, but to simply say you cannot partition because there's a wetland, um, would probably not fly. And, and, and I'm really hesitant, otherwise, um, for example, in the Willamette Valley, that'd be probably half the property. So you have to have some way to mitigate that. And again, you can go through a planned development, you can go through a process of, uh, not partitioning that particular area with that. Um, and then obviously you can mitigate with the DSL, either onsite or offsite. There's mitigation bank options that might occur, but again.
How is how, how is your unspecified, undefined, unlisted mitigation? Or conditions any more clear and objective than saying you can't do it?
Well, saying you can't do it, okay, let me ask you this, if you're looking at wetlands, what percentage of the property? Hundred percent, half, half the property? I'm not trying to say that wetlands will not be a factor, but I am concerned to simply say the existence of wetlands prohibits the division of the property. That is inappropriate. And we are still subject to the rules in other stage, uh, agencies, DSL, DEQ, um, EP, uh, uh, environmental health, et cetera. And so we're still subject to those rules, but to simply say we cannot support a partition because there's wetland on the property, I don't think that would fly at all.
So while any, any of these kind of items, presumably a wetland is regulated in federal, or used to be regulated at the federal level, and, uh, the state level, and the mitigation seekers are called out there, and setbacks, et cetera, et cetera. Uh, it is, uh, as a general question, can the city of Manzanita, if they so deem, create their own regulations around those kind of items, such as wetlands or steep slopes or geological hazard, or, you know, anything like that, or are those all kind of outside the purview of the city of Manzanita?
Uh, that's a little bit different question, and I think that's an appropriate one. Uh, I think, uh, what might assist here, uh, so everyone is comfortable with the process is that under conditions of approval, um, provide like a couple of sentences in there about uh, the city has the right to condition the project with uh, regard to the existence of wetland slopes. We do have some discussion on slopes, for example, the minimum lot area needs to increase based on the slope, um, we can kind of incorporate that. I, I, I just really hesitate to say no partitions at all with a, uh, wetland. But I think it, it would be fair to go ahead and clarify in the conditioning of uh, avenue, if you will, that the city does have that authority and can say move, uh, suggest movement or property lines, or in a in another case, since we do a little bit of a pre-app beforehand, if there's any wetlands on the property, it is incumbent upon staff to let the applicant know that there might be difficulties, that they may need to mitigate, that they may not have enough open space to, uh, develop the property. So it's really a two-way street with the applicant and the city to, uh, address those issues as soon as possible.
How do you mitigate?
Uh. Well, you can, for example, if you have a ten acre parcel and you have two acres of wetland, um, they seem to change the rules a lot. You may have to go ahead and, uh, go ahead and let's say two to one ratio, uh, it used to be one to one, but say two to one ratio, two acres of wetland, you now need to create four more acres of wetland. So what starts off as a ten acre parcel, you're down to four developable acres. And that is, the owner, I think, also has a responsibility to go ahead and make sure, um, they are aware of wetlands on the property, but we've gone through a couple of applications here where the issues of wetlands, uh, were brought forth, and I think the last one was on third uh, with Heron subdivision, and that wetland issue was previously addressed by the, uh, uh, applicant. So again, my, my whole point is that that's a factor in maybe how the property lines are drawn out. Maybe that's a factor in how public facilities are provided. And maybe it's a financial factor that doesn't make it work, but it's not a factor that says you just can't do it.
Well, where do we document what you just said in our revised ordinance?
Okay, um, well, this is obviously recorded. Um, and if there is a motion on the part of the uh, planning commission to go ahead and amend ninety-five dash five to incorporate language, uh, uh, allowing the city or guaranteeing or supporting the city, uh, as part of the conditions of approval, may go ahead and address such, such issues as wetlands and, uh, topography and, uh, streams and creeks and, uh, whatnot. I think that might be one way of doing it. And if that's what I hear, then I could do some wordsmithing, uh, for a final document that would be signed up.
I'm wondering if that would be appropriate in Article Two. There are lots and parcels, it has the minimum area for air, with slopes. And just to add a provision that the city may require additional conditions.
I could actually
Topographical.
Where, where do you think that should be?
Under Article Two, just lots and parcels, the design standards. There talks about minimum area with a slope, you know, access requirements, flag lots, and just to note that there may be additional conditions based on topographic.
Wouldn't that be true of subdivisions and partitions as well?
Um, with, with subdivisions and partitions are two separate sections.
I understand that, right.
Article Two just provides a basis for um, these are the lot requirements. And one of them includes increasing minimum lot size due to slope. I'm suggesting that I think that's a good place to maybe signal. Um, in fact, you can even write that out a little bit, another section uh, that talks about, uh, additional topographical features on the property may require, um, larger lot sizes or something, and then go back to the conditions in partitions and subdivisions, I'm trying to get this down as quickly as I can. And, um, just simply know as part of the conditions, uh, the city will review all this material. And, um, we have the authority to, uh, e- e- accept or reject, or if the, if there's nothing that can be done, if you have a hundred percent wetlands on your property, um, my first advice will always be, please go see the Department of State lands, because we cannot proceed in some manner without proper mitigation. So, uh, that would be my suggestion.
You think Article Two and not Article Seven?
No, I would put it on Article Two, and I would also put it on Articles Five and Six. Five is partitions, or wait a minute, was it seven? We have conditions of approval. Um, wherever there are conditions, again, I don't have it right in front of me, but wherever we have a provision on conditions of approval, we would put that language. And I could, I could do some
I think it's in, I think it's in seven, isn't it?
That's what I think.
Okay, and that's, that's fine, I could go ahead and do that and just reinforce to make sure that is in there, if need be, in Five and Six as well. I think the thrust of the discussion is, you want to be sure that the city can incorporate this material in their decision and make the necessary conditions of approval to, uh, address those concerns. And I think we can do it in Articles Two, and wherever we look at conditions of, uh, uh, approval for, uh, land visions.
Addition.
Notes.
I'll let you do the wordsmithing, but I think if you take Section forty-seven, which has the prohibition on harming wetlands and turn it into your protection, make it protection of and put in the condition language. Like, it seems to me, if you want to be clear and objective, you're gonna have to be more descriptive about what conditions you're gonna impose.
Well, one thing
Drawing the lines.
One thing
Aren't those, it's all about line drawing, boundaries, right?
Correct. The other thing is that there's nothing to say that an applicant should not be aware of some of these limitations on the property. And it's pretty simple to say in the staff report, for example, there were no identified wetlands on the site, so we can take care of that, or we can go back and also say, and I've done this with other partitions and subdivisions, to say we are aware of a wetland of approximately half an acre. The applicant either has to mitigate it in compliance with state law, or has to mitigate it onsite in compliance with state law. And we recognize that this may result in an alteration and potential reduction in the number of lots. So you recognize that they really should do this upfront. If we find out that there are wetlands up front, it's definitely would be my, in my interest, or whoever your, uh, staff planner is gonna be doing this, in their interest to go ahead and make sure that they've looked at the issue of wetlands on the property before they actually submit for a partition. It's, it, it's just dare I say, it's common sense. Um, and if you think you have a wetland that needs to be, uh, looked at, uh, really be, before you get too far in the partitioning process.
Okay, one more question, I'm sorry to, to annoy everyone on this, but this is important to me. When you talk about mitigation via the state.
Mm-hmm.
Can you mitigate by filling in the wetland here, and oh, I will create another one in Hillsboro? So are we, are we, are we ceding to the state the, the authority to compensate for the loss of wetlands in our community?
The wetland mitigation um, has to be within the same watershed. So in other words, if there is local mitigation, it will be in a watershed that will, um, which Manzanita is a part of. The other option too is that there are wetland mitigation banks, but even those have to accommodate like-for-like. Uh, boy, I've been dealt with this one for a few years, but like-for-like soils and like-for-like conditions. Um, mitigation banks are kind of going away right now, so, but they, they would have, the state make sure had, they have the professional judgment to make sure that what's mitigated is within that watershed, so there's sort of a like-for-like, uh, trade-off. You know, this is one of the reasons I don't put things like pipe size in, in, uh, development codes, because things change over time, and you may find a bigger pipe is necessary, a smaller pipe is necessary, or some other option may become available as technology changes, that would still meet the needs for providing water and taking care of sewer. So that's why you will find in the codes, usually comments that say, um, well, water needs to comply with the city of Manzanita Public Works, uh, design and construction requirements. So, um, no, leave the details up, but that still doesn't make it clear. It certainly is still clear in a, and objective. So I leave that decision on the wetland mitigation up to the folks that have to monitor the program. I wish I can give you more details.
Any more on this?
No, I, I, it's a probably general comment about the, uh, depth of the regulations the city of Manzanita has. And, you know, in many jurisdictions, there's very specific callouts as it relates to environmental conditions that may be different from community to community. And, uh, very used to geological ha- hazards, deep slopes. Uh, wetlands a little less, because they have traditionally been regulated at a higher level than the municipal. Uh, uh, so I think, uh, you know, language that, uh, really directs it towards the science is really what needs to happen. And, uh, the issues of approval, inserting it there. And then, uh, you know, maybe at a future date, there's a discussion by the commission about the uh, depth of, uh, uh, regulatory environment for some of these environmental conditions. And that can include hazardous materials, other things, and traditionally, when you, in many jurisdictions, a pretty deep dive uh, that you need to do. Including geological hazard, that's a very common. So my suggestion would be, probably to take the suggestion to put it into the conditions of approval somewhere. And then maybe at a future, uh, commission workshop or something, we could talk a little bit bigger about some of these things that, uh, would be important to the community.
Good idea. Okay.
I, I do have a question, Walt, before he goes, gets his beer, though.
All right.
Oh, I'm gonna have a glass of wine tonight. Oh, I'm going to have a glass of wine tonight.
Okay, I'll join you in that. Uh, the uh, uh, Marcy helped clarify that the provisions. Uh, in ninety-five dash five. Uh, that we've kind of done a deep dive on, which would include. Uh, design standards, street standards, property boundary adjustments, partition subdivisions. All that doesn't really apply to middle house. Is that your understanding also?
Um. Okay, there's really a couple of things here. I think uh, Article three on streets. Applies to both expedited and middle housing. Um, you still have to have sewer and water taken care of, so those. General kind of public facility provisions still apply. Um, with that, Article eight is very specific for expedited land divisions. And then Article nine is very specific to the middle housing regulations. So um, and if I think ninety-five dash four will include all the minimum lot size and every. Other detail in terms of. Uh, whatever ratios or whatever quantitative standards would apply to the uh, new um. Uh, units or or lots or parcels. So yes, this does include it, but specifically eight and nine address expedited and middle housing.
Okay.
I think the question though was um, we have shared driveways. And other shared tract allowances in ninety-five four related to middle housing that would um. That conflict that, that uh, provisions for streets and uh, private streets, they conflict with those in ninety-five four, so. We need to exclude certain ninety-five four provisions specifically for middle housing. From the street standards.
You two will have a conversation over a glass of wine about that, sounds like.
Yes.
Concur.
Do we, do we need to identify those right now? Yeah, or?
No, I think we can do that and we can include it in the other revisions that Walt is talking about. Just talked about.
I'm, I'm making notes. Did before we um. Finished, were there questions about expedited land use hearings or the middle housing? I, I had a question and it's really dumb, but um. At the top of both Article eight and nine, there's a. Language in parentheses, regulations in this draft are based on provisions of HB twenty-one thirty-eight, et cetera. That's not going to be in the final.
Right.
Or that's correct. Okay, because if it is, it's very confusing.
Yeah, I know, we just wanted you to know, that's the.
Okay, so that language will be struck on both. And I just have one other. Small thing, um. Under eight oh two oh process subsection B. Um, B two. It says the explanation of the right of the applicant to appeal. The Community Development Director's decision. I think that needs to be city man.
Managed decision.
And that's in another uh, section as well related to the middle housing. It's just a. It's a language thing we want to. Since we don't have a community develop.
I'm used to that title, so I don't, I didn't notice that.
Okay, so um, that, that, those were the only changes I had.
Just one more question on that is in uh, in eight. Uh, the land division does not provide for dwellings or testory buildings located in beaches and dunes overlay zone. And uh. Which says that those areas would be, would not be an expedited process, which makes a lot sense.
Which makes a lot sense.
And I guess the only question is if, if uh. If there are other environmental conditions. Where the city couldn't respond within the sixty-three days, does there need to be any other? Qualifying.
I'm not aware of. Anything else in eight or nine? I've been making a list of the things that we talked about, that we wanted to address in this, and I. Give you, give you them really quickly and you can tell me what we missed. They're not necessarily in order by article. One, um, somewhere in the document, we need to address um, the fact that additional conditions of approval may be required for topographic. Wetland or other natural features on the site. That's one. Um, we wanted to make sure that we included the two hundred fifty foot side block length. When we're talking about the block dimensions. Um, just a little tiny thing, just delete the reference to item four in six point oh two oh sub B sub six. It's just that related to one oh one. Um, did we make any changes or revisions to the shared drive access driveway dimensions?
No.
No, we'd left that alone because it doesn't refer to middle housing.
I think you missed the eight hundred foot block length too.
Right.
Yeah.
Table.
Thank you.
Okay, um, and then we wanted to make sure that we added to street standards that this section does not apply to. Is that correct? Is there anything else that I missed?
I think we had adjustment to the language in the alley.
Yes.
Okay, just to strike uh.
It is not just a secondary street.
Yeah, secondary.
It's not sec, it's not only secondary access.
All right, and what else?
Walt's going to come back to us with. Some proposed language about the. A middle, some, about the omission of things that were in section forty-seven, yeah?
That's going to be the amendment to the conditions of approval to ensure that anything related to the natural areas are addressed.
Okay.
Yeah.
I think additions. Okay, um, with these suggested revisions. Is there, are, are we at a point where we can recommend? Council that they adopt ninety-five five as. We've revised here.
You have a chance to review the updated version of this before it goes to council.
So we can send, we've typically sent the final order to, or we always send it to the chair before it goes to the. Council, so we can send the final draft to the commission. If you want to have further discussion, debate, deliberation, then um, I would recommend you wait until. I'm seeing no, so I send you a copy, uh, so if you do decide to make a motion. You can, there's always a point you can correct it later.
Look, I won't support the motion. I want to see the language first, especially the language relating to the conditions relating to weapons.
Okay, then that just if that's the recommendation, then you would um, continue the hearing to.
December.
December, and we can revise the information, share it with you, and you can have your vote, and that'll kick us back another month.
So let me test whether there's any other support on the commission for that. I moved to continue this till the next meeting.
I'm kind of going without seeing the text.
Is that a second?
I didn't know, did you make a?
I thought I moved.
Did you move?
I'm, I moved that we.
Okay, um, we also have not from the public on this, so it would be good to have. Uh, I don't know if we have people in the audience today that wanted to comment on this. Um, if we continue. Um, do we, do we have final, final language to our December meeting? Does that?
Yeah, you can continue the hearing to December, have it open. So you just continue it to December eighth, and then you can review the final language and open it up for public testimony. Deliverate. Open it up, close it, deliberate. Make your decision.
Okay, is that essentially your motion?
I guess.
Continue to December eighth. And was the second?
Not sure what I seconded, but yeah.
We're going to continue this hearing to December eighth.
I second that.
Okay.
At which time, we will have. Hopefully the revised.
You'll have DL's TV legal review and the changes that you have to this, you know? Okay, um, any further discussion?
Well, I, I think it would be uh, just uh, it'd be great to have the final, almost final uh, ninety-five four. Attached to that document.
Would be very helpful. Yeah, okay.
Well, uh, just as a reference, uh, okay.
Okay, uh, any further discussion? Glad you've been very quiet. Just want to make sure that where you are on this. All good? Okay. Um, all in favor? I will raise your hand. Continuing to decent. Motion carries. We're getting there. We're soaked.
Is there anything else on the agenda?
Um, the only other thing is any updates, but. So I think that's it.
Yes, correct. For next month, we have a design review. For the Spin Hotel, they're proposing a cafe in the lobby. So that, that's all I've got, a public hearing.
Okay.
Uh, it was, this was a spin draft, now they're the, the spin.
Thank you, Scott.
Thank you.
Uh, before we adjourn, if I may bring in uh, some other issue, I, you know, we, we skipped a meeting a month ago. Um, that I planned for and looked forward to and uh, came down here for from Portland, and I was a little disappointed that it didn't happen. And more importantly, that we didn't take that opportunity to. Discuss other things. Uh, I've noticed that the city council has a habit of, you know, just having a, a meeting where they just discuss issues before them. They're not actually taking. Uh, action on any issue, and I would hope in the future that we could do. The same thing. Um, if, if other people are willing, we don't have to act when there's an application before us. I like seeing all of you, like coming down here. Um, but more importantly, I think that there's a lot of issues that um. Are important and deserve discussion. Um, and. One of them, for instance, was, you know, what to do with La Nida and design review on La Nida. Um. Some of these issues um, may be. Uh. We can get to work in discussing and talking about now. Uh, rather than waiting until the end of the comprehensive plan process, which I understand is going to take till the end of next year. And that will just simply culminate in a comprehensive plan. There's going to have to be all sorts of implementing ordinances and stuff, and I. I think there's a lot of issues that are going to come up, and maybe we want to talk about them. Sooner than that, than just, you know. To carry on the momentum with the good work that we've done on, on middle housing and partitioning.
Tom, are you referring to? Kind of adopting some sort of, some format of work sessions? Is that kind of what you're leading up to?
Yeah, that was the word I was looking for, that uh, I think it would be useful. I, I don't want to just um. Having put in time on this. On some of these issues, just retire and wait and come back a couple of years from now to do some more hard work on ordinances, uh. Um. I'd like to talk about things. Sooner than that, and there are limitations on the extent to which we can all talk. You know. Um, outside of a public meeting, and in fact, if we are talking about things collectively, it should be in a public meeting and, and the. The public can participate, listen in. Um, offer their own suggestions, so. I, I guess I would like, I'm wondering if anyone else feels. Uh, an interest in that sort of process.
Question for the rest of the commissioners. I am the liaison to the. Uh. Public Committee. And the comprehensive plan. Would you like an update in our meeting? For a five-minute update to be put on the agenda or?
Yeah, that, that would be useful.
And I can, I will. Uh, you know, Scott's still on, but maybe he can include that on the agenda, or I'll talk to uh, Leila about it. Uh, and just put a little five-minute blurb on the agenda somewhere, and I'll just tell you what we discussed at our last meeting.
Okay, Josh.
Yes, well, you want to, you want me to block out five minutes for you to do an update on? What was it again? Yeah, yeah, see, the Public Advisory Committee for the uh, Comprehensive Plan. We, we, the committee has a meeting routes tomorrow from ten thirty to twelve thirty, but we talk about which. Uh, goal, you know, and how we're going to proceed with getting community information on that. And I can just, five minutes to update the commission on that. I'll add that to the agenda, but um. Just let me know beforehand, you know, if you're going to have something for the next meeting, and I'll make sure to block out some time.
I, I think back to Tom's question, I would definitely support that. I think that, that forum or work sessions would make us better.
Yeah, I think that's going to have to be run, run by Leila, so. As far as for staffing availability to be able to do that.
I, I think it would be good to have. How do other commissioners feel about this?
Pardon me?
I, I'm asking, how do other commissioners feel about work sessions?
I, I believe it would be very useful. Uh, I don't, we need to have them for project review, right? Because that can happen in a commission meeting, but uh, I think given the, the good work by the. Folks with the comprehensive plan, you know, there's probably going to be a lot of work in, for the commission over the next few years. And uh, it might be good to understand what topics would be potentially tackled at what time? In the future, and then I do agree, Tom, that there are certain things that, that uh. Would be useful to have a work session on, you know, that our city center is so treasured by all of us. You know, and we, we know we have a limited amount of it. And so it's an important tax base for a community. And uh, I think we just need to make sure that we're uh. You know, as commissioners with our diverse experience, uh, are looking out for the future.
Well, uh, one of the things we could discuss in a work session are. Things that are happening in the community that we don't necessarily get wind of. Like what's happening with the old pole that the uh. Um, steeplejacks versus the new and stuff like that, what, what? The sale of the spin drift and or the reimagining of the spin drift. Um. Love the idea of a little cafe in the. But.
Good to be.
Yeah, well, Tom, I support your idea. I, I, I like the idea.
I, I like the idea too. I'd like it to be with an agenda and not completely free range. Because staff also needs to help prepare. If we're going to be talking about free range and we're, we go off on a tangent that's illegal for us to be. Thinking about or speaking about. I just want to make sure that we're, that staff is able to prepare. To support us. Um.
Yeah, I, I, I wasn't thinking free range things. I have actually some specific ideas and one of them. Yeah, I I I wasn't thinking free range things. I have actually some specific ideas, and one of them was actually. Uh, about La Nida, and and I discovered. Um, after our last meeting that um. That for residential structures on La Nida, you do not need design review. Um, which I was surprised that there is a residential, a new residential structure there that has. Um, an imposing front fence that uh I think um. To my sensibilities, maybe not shared with other people, um, maybe shared, it is inappropriate. Uh, on La Nida to have that. Offer between the sidewalk, the airstream walkway. And and the structure, so uh the idea of mending the ordinance to require design review even for for whatever the structure, commercial or residential. Is an idea that maybe uh is worthwhile discussing. I'm thinking of things more specific like that. It could certainly be brought up. And I don't know that it would demand until we, you know, every everybody says, that's a stupid idea, Tom, shot down. It doesn't involve any staff time. If we decide to go forward with it, maybe there will be some staff time, and that so we'll have to take into account what's required for that. I think, Tom, I think the commercial zones, I think we still have those.
Yeah, why?
Yeah, including, you know, one oh one and and elsewhere in terms of what's the. Uh, you know, how does Manzanita grow? And grow with grace, and so I I would agree uh that uh there needs to be discussion about that, the experience of. And I'm hoping that's not incompatible with whatever the the comp plan is when it comes out, you know, if if the comp plan says, no, we want all this, then. We've spent some time doing something that we shouldn't have, but I imagine it's gonna, well, from the vision. It's leading to the comp plan says we want small town feel. Uh, so we can take steps. To work on those things or talk about them without waiting for it to be formalized in a comp plan sometime. That that's my.
I I agree. I think good dis- good discussion is is always a good thing.
So at what point would we seek Leila's input?
I I think first thing to do, if you have specific topics you want to talk about, send them to me. And I'll put them in a document that we'll all have access to, and we can try to prioritize it perhaps in um coordination. With the with the advisory committee with their work so that we're not trying to, you know, duplicating or. Um, and and we'll just try to get it all coordinated, and I think it's a great idea. I think we should do it. Okay.
Dude, I wasn't proposing a lot of discussion regarding the comp plan. Uh, I was just gonna give you a five minute update on where we are in terms of schedule and everything, but. Having said that.
Cause you're talking about.
Yeah.
The commercial zone. I mean, that's that's.
I think.
Plan line items and.
I think that's.
Let's.
More. Yeah, this group probably cares less about, well, I don't say they care less about dunes, but. Our mandate is probably more along the lines of design review for La Nida.
Okay.
We adjourn?